I want to do both. Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mrs. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones, Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinter.
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Dr. Hornick, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And at this time, I will open public comment for the 2023-2024 School Division Operating Budget. And Mrs. Byram, do we have anyone signed up to speak on the budget?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay. Hearing that we have no one signed up to speak to the budget, I will declare public comment closed. And we will continue on with business, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're going to start this evening with Mrs. Ayler, who's here to give an update on our December 1 child count.
Good evening, Ms. Page, members of the board, Dr. Hornick. Each year I come and report on the December 1 child count for special education. So this is an unduplicated count of the number of students in Orange County Public Schools who've been identified as a student with a disability. The December 1 child count gives us kind of that one-day snapshot. Every other year, that number is actually used to determine funding for the state funding and federal funding. And because this is 2022 was an even-numbered year, that is a year that is used for funding. So as you can see, we had a total count of 683 students. Last year, in 2021, we had 659 students. The next page that you'll see is also by category or by disability. And it breaks down just the different disabilities of the 683 students. Again, some of our students are identified as having more than one disability, but this is an unduplicated count. So they're identified by their primary disability. Any questions?
Are there any questions of Ms. Ayler? Come in. Okay, all right, all right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ayler.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and at this time invite Mr. Sarver, Transportation Director, to come forward, and he has information on some surplus property.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, members of the board. I come this evening requesting consideration of declaring Ford Division vehicles as surplus property. The vehicles have served the county well and would be used as a future trade-in credit on a future purchase.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Sarver? Okay. So if not, would you guys entertain a motion to go ahead and pass this so we can get them listed for trade-in or either?
I move to declare the Ford Division-owned trucks and automobiles as surplus property for disposal.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'd invite Mr. Hill to come forward, Technology Director, to discuss surplus for technology.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as you can see, we've listed more items that we have collected throughout the district. Some of these items are broken and are no longer functional. Some are still usable, but they do not comply with the state of our technology at this time. They're older devices, and we're unable to connect with those. We do repurpose anything that we can for instructional purposes throughout the district, but for the most... All of these items on here have not found another purpose within the district, so I'm asking that you consider these for surplus. We will try and recoup on anything that we can. Otherwise, we recycle them with environmental recycling.
That was my next question, would they go to the environmental?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any questions? Come in. All right, are we comfortable with going ahead and making a motion to declare those surplus?
I move to approve the request to declare technology equipment as surplus property for disposal.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, we are going to present draft calendar options for the upcoming school year. So I'm going to take a little bit of time to talk about where we've been here, and Ms. Dawson is available as well to answer questions. You have two draft calendars in front of you, and we began this process earlier in the year with getting input from a calendar committee that was put together, as well as teacher advisory committee, parent advisory committee, as well as the cabinet and principals, and a number of folks had a hand in crafting this calendar. The first thing that you will notice, if you pull up draft one, please, Laura. One thing you'll notice is we decided to use a little bit different format this year that we hoped that our community will find to be easier on the eyes, a little bit better with accessibility and readability. Some of the highlights of changes that we're doing, one, as we spoke with new teachers as well as mentors, many of them felt that two days for a new teacher institute at the beginning of the year was quite overwhelming. And so we are going to work to have a five-day new teacher institute the week before all teachers would return. And the goal of this institute will not be to increase the amount of meetings and professional development the teachers do, the new teachers do. It will be to keep that same level of orientation and onboarding, spread it out over the course of more days, thereby providing mentors and new teachers more opportunities to meet, new teachers more opportunities to be in their classroom, getting prepared, and hopefully easing the transition a little bit more back to working for their first time as new teachers in the schools. Another thing that you will notice is we have, we spoke with our folks, and there was a lot of support for specifically identifying in the calendar days that would be unencumbered, so to speak, for teacher workdays, for them to do grades, work in their classroom, work with their professional learning communities, and also days where they would know upfront that they will be engaging in professional development, whether that's delivered by us as a central office team, one of the coordinators, whether it's somebody that we bring in from the outside, depending on what the nature of the professional development would be. And so when you look at Teacher Work Week, for instance, you would have the 31st and the 1st of August, the 4th of August and the 7th would be identified as Teacher Professional Development Days, whereas the 2nd, the 3rd, and the 8th of August are identified as Teacher Workdays. We would like to target open house for all schools on Thursday, the 3rd, and following in line with last year's calendar, the first day for students would be the Wednesday after, in this calendar, it would be the 9th. As we move into September, due to the early start day, the 1st and the 4th, by code, we're required to have no school those days. One of the things that the calendar committee, the parent advisory, and the teacher advisory all had a lot, and the idea actually came from a teacher on the teacher advisory committee. They were very interested in the possibility of moving parent-teacher conferences forward, so to speak. So instead of doing them right at the end of the nine weeks, which would be right around the October 13th timeframe, they thought that there would be some value in targeting the six-to-seven-week mark so that those parent conferences can become more formative in nature, and specifically if there are things that need to be addressed with a student, or if we want to work on behavior or performance or any combination of the two, by the time we have a parent conference, the first quarter isn't completely done and over with. And so what we did in this calendar is we are going to host, we're proposing a one-day parent-teacher conferences at all schools on Friday, the 22nd. And so in order to give teachers sufficient time to prepare for those conferences and make sure that they are valuable for our parents and guardians who are coming in, we would have an early release for students on the 21st. October 9th is Columbus Day. It's a federal holiday. We would like to target adding professional development to that day. And the 20th would be a workday at the end of the nine weeks for teachers to get their grades done, complete, et cetera. November remains largely unchanged from previous calendars. November the 7th is Election Day, and three days for the Thanksgiving break on the 22nd through the 24th. Moving into December, this calendar has the same length winter break that the current year had, so the 2023 going into '24 winter break is the same length. We'd have an early release on the 21st, and then there'd be staff and student holiday from the 22nd of December up through, I believe it is the 2nd of January. We have worked with all schools to make it known that we want to transition. Should this calendar be adopted, we want to be able to transition to the second semester in one day. So January 3rd is identified as a workday, with students coming back on January the 4th. The 15th is a student-staff holiday for Martin Luther King Day. And then when we move into September, we are going to target the same idea. We'd like to have an early release on the 15th so that we can prepare for parent conferences, and we would also like to have a professional development day dedicated in February. Up through there into March, the date that you see on the calendar is a workday on the 15th, which is shortly after the end of the third nine weeks for teachers to engage in work to make sure the grades are ready and prepared. Easter is on the 31st, and the spring break holiday will be the 1st through the 5th. Graduation will be on the 18th, and underclassmen would return for two days in May with a teacher workday on the 22nd. This calendar was built in response to the desire of many teachers, as well as parents on the parent committee, that saw value in, one, moving parent-teacher conferences forward; two, providing dedicated professional learning days so that we can help teachers improve their craft and their capacity; and have dedicated workdays so that teachers do not feel like they're pulled in 100 different directions when we have deadlines that they are facing and grades that they need to complete. We also did a considerable number of calculating and numbers and numbers and numbers to look at school closings should there be the event of a snow makeup. With this calendar, we are going to have enough, plenty of time to absorb some inclement weather days. And so we have the ability to absorb the first five and make up one snow day for the next set of two days that we would miss moving forward. So if you looked in draft one, should we have to get to day seven or day nine, hopefully we don't, we would add the 22nd and the 23rd of May as full days, and then we would have the 24th as the workday. This was going to leave us with a little over 1,048 hours at the elementary level, 1,114 at the high school level, and 1,111 at the middle school level. We're required to have a minimum of 990. We also wanted to make sure that we were cognizant of the clock-hour requirement for high school and middle school students who are taking classes for credit at the middle school level, for high school credit. And we also have enough time to ensure that we do not dip below the required number in that category. As you look at draft two, it is literally the exact same document, except there is a different potential option when you look at January. Instead of having a workday on the 3rd and students returning on the 4th, another potential option would be to have a workday on the 4th and a professional development day on the 5th. I believe that's actually might be, yes, 4th is workday, 5th professional development day. However, in order to make that work, we have to add two additional days in May to make sure that we still hit our number. Gives us a little bit less flexibility with snow and inclement weather days. We would like, we would have to sacrifice March the 15th, and we would have to sacrifice May the 24th in this calendar. I think we've hit the highlights, and I'm welcome to take any questions, or Ms. Dawson as well, if you'd be ready in case we have any questions about our proposed school calendars.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the second one, and in August, it has day one, four, and seven a certain thing, and day two, three, and eight is something else. I don't understand the difference between the days.
Sure, okay, so there are some days, whenever students are not in the building, there are some days that we literally dedicate for teachers to engage in professional learning, in a professional development activity. Whereas in other days, it is more of a workday where they are in their classrooms, a little bit more unencumbered. They're not attending meetings. They're not being engaged in professional learning. And so we tried to break those out to have more of a balance and to let our teachers know ahead of time when they, so that they know when they're coming to work on August the 2nd, they know that their principal will not be calling them together, and they will not have Dr. Anderson or Dr. Honniger, one of our coordinators, coming to engage in professional development, curriculum design work, et cetera. For instance, we did that on Wednesday, the 2nd, because we want to have open house on the 3rd. And so to ensure that teachers can get their rooms ready and to have syllabi ready and things that they want to do, we're going to provide them the opportunity to have that as a workday. The day before school, August the 8th, that would be a day that we would want the teachers to have more flexibility in their schedules to make sure their room and their work and their papers and their copies and their canvas and everything else in their classroom is ready for day one. So it's really for the purpose of the teachers. They were asking us if we could help identify a little bit with a little bit more specificity, so they had some expectations coming in of what those days would look like. And so that was where the color coding came in and why we built them on particular days.
And I'm assuming that the second calendar, the teachers, the veteran teachers come back on the 31st?
That's correct. Yes, sir. So in both calendars, the new teacher institute runs from July 24th to the 28th. All teachers return on July the 31st in both calendars. And so the days get a little bit off-base, but this is, these are the same weeks that our teachers returned this year in 2022.
I guess this second calendar, the parents and the students may like it because they have an extended Christmas vacation.
You would be, so truthfully, it was split. Our parent advisory actually came back to us and said that they preferred option one because they liked having, and liked the idea of having a shorter week for students coming back. There was about split on the calendar committee as far as between draft one and draft two. However, when we explained the flexibility that draft one gives us as far as being able to absorb, and when we have to get to making up snow days, should we get to that point, draft one is advantageous because we do not have to sacrifice a teacher workday, whereas on draft two, we have to. So the calendar committee liked one. The teacher advisory, I would say, was split. The parent advisory came back with one. My overall preference and the overall preference of the administration is draft one due to the flexibility at the end, if should we have to add two inclement weather days.
That's basically all I needed, because I could vote for either one of them. I just need to know where the administration wants to go.
Yes, sir. And that's the big difference with the two. Draft one, the thing that is a benefit to us is the flexibility with snow days.
Yeah, that was my thinking, just being a parent myself and knowing, getting back in the routine of things. I think having a shorter entry back into school and back into a routine, I think, would be beneficial.
So what you articulated is exactly what the parent advisory did. They made it akin to the beginning of the year where we start on Wednesday, and you have some time to reset, get back into the groove in draft one. That gives you that opportunity on the 4th and the 5th as opposed to your, everybody's coming back on a cold on a Monday. And that was really the idea, and that's where the parent advisory committee actually came back and saw great value in having students in school Thursday and Friday that week.
So are you two members comfortable with passing this, or would you rather wait till?
No, I think we should wait. First is, that'll give time for public comment. And second is, it'll give a chance to our other two members to see it. So I would say we should.
I would agree. That was why I was asking. Okay, all righty.
Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate that. And if there's any additional follow-up, of course, myself or Ms. Dawson are available to you. At this time, I believe it's Mr. Arnold's going to come forward to provide an update on school facility projects.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick, and Madam Chairman, members of the board. For what little it may be worth, Facilities Project supports draft two of the calendar. It's almost three weeks to get stuff done. Thank you. Moving on, we'll start with Gordon Barber. Classroom addition renovations is moving right along. It's finally hit its stride. We've got it under roof, and we have the concrete slab poured as of Friday, January 13th. So they'll be continuing the roof decking, insulation, and those have been completed. Metal studs, electrical, and plumbing roughing will be underway for the next few weeks. Orange Elementary, the equipment is on order for the HVAC replacement in classrooms and in the gymnasium. And that, of course, is to replace the two-pipe system with water-source heat pumps for better efficiency and humidity control and the ability to heat or cool each room as needed any day of the year. Locust Grove Elementary School unfortunately experienced a major water loss where a pipe leading to a water fountain in the back of the gym and an exterior chaise froze on that five-degree day and then thawed out the following week and flooded just about the entire gym. We've had the decking, the floorboards and underlayments, two layers of plywood that was all saturated. So we've removed that from the worst section of the gym floor and keeping heat on and dryers on to keep it from, to let it dry out. And we'll be coming in on Wednesday to take up the rest of the bad flooring. And then we'll work with the insurance company to get it put back. Locust Grove Primary School has, was built with wood baseboard like you have in your house. Seven other rooms in the front office have had termite damage, so we came in and tore out the baseboard in those rooms and put in 1x6 PVC board. So we'll eventually be doing that in other rooms, but we've got the ones that we knew about. We also replaced several benches and platforms on the playgrounds, which had deteriorated. About 30 years old, but amazingly, we're able to get parts and replace them one-on-one. Chillers are on order for both Locust Grove Elementary and Prospect Heights. The first pair should be arriving in April and the others in August. Here at Teak, we completed the IT workroom with a new ceiling grid and new LED lighting and registers for the new HVAC. And as I may have mentioned before, the room previously had no ceiling, and it had three very loud HVAC units that were part of the two-pipe system as well. And at Unionville, we have removed the old radiators from the music room and all the hallways. And that was the radiators that had the asbestos paper behind them, and so we had to do it in time when the building was unoccupied. Same contractor patched and painted the walls. And we also replaced the carpet in the music room with carpet tiles matching the tiles that were used in the library, if you've been in that library. Now, the remaining radiators are only in the offices, restrooms, and the conference room, and we plan to remove those during the summer. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold, and Madam Chair, members of the board. We'll move on. And Mr. Honniger and I, we are going to provide an initial update as far as the work we've done on the operating budget and our priorities and our targets for this upcoming budget season. And so again, this is going to be a focus on our 23-24 operating budget priorities. And so we will start with the realm of salary and benefits and things that we would like to prioritize. So first and foremost, we want to make sure that we do not, go forward. We want to not pass along increases in health insurance to employees. This is a priority for us, and I would say, I believe, for the county as well. And there were provisions this past year that we'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation. But this would definitely be a high priority for Orange County Public Schools. We also, if you've seen some of the information coming out from the administration and the VDOE, one of their goals in the upcoming year is to have a 1% retention bonus for SOQ positions. As you look at a school division like ours, where we have a number of critically important employees who are not identified in the standards of quality, we have historically, and with good reason, always made sure that we found a way to take care of all of our employees, not just ones who are identified in the Virginia standards of quality. So we would have a priority to be able to offer a retention bonus to all full-time employees. We do have the flexibility, based on what I read and what Mr. Honniger read, to determine how that would look and how long an employee would have had to have worked in the school division, et cetera. division, et cetera. So the, the school division, school divisions do have flexibility to determine some of those parameters and some of those specifics. But our priority would be to hopefully provide this bonus to all returning full-time employees. Thanks, Laura. We also are going to target at a minimum of a 5% pay increase for full-time employees. This is in line with state goals as well. Again, the state of Virginia is going to provide funding for SOQ positions. And again, we would want to make sure that all of our employees were able to keep up with inflation and to recognize their service and their efforts. We also have a host of areas that we would really like to attack for a raise beyond the 5%. And this is where the numbers game will come in and we'll have to, this is where Mr. Honniger and I will be working. But we have identified classifications, teachers, mechanics, custodians, bus drivers and our instructional assistants as groups that we would like to target for a percentage beyond Just for a little bit of background information, we are consistently looking at the market and establishing where we stand relative to our neighbors and neighboring divisions. And so what do you see before you as a chart that you all have seen in the past? It takes a look at our neighboring school divisions such as Albemarle, Culpeper, Green, Louisa, Madison, et cetera. And as you go through, you see there's an average and where we are and how much we are below that average. And then in the second column from the right, Mr. Honniger, in that area, he removed the extremes. He removed the minimum and the maximum between all of these comparison divisions to get an idea of where we are more within the median as we remove the two ends. If you go to the next one, please, Ms. Byram. We also have worked with Ms. Dawson and as, as we have tracked the comings and goings of our employees, in the past year, we have lost the most employees, particularly teachers, to Culpeper, Louisa and Spotsylvania. And so we have identified those as our quote-unquote immediate competitors. That is where we seem to, if we're, if we lose an employee, unfortunately, these, these school divisions seem to be the beneficiary. And so with respect to this grouping, and we, we did, as opposed to loading up the entire screen, we, we took it at five-step increments. We perform, as you can see, better at the bottom end where we're actually $202 over the average. And then from there, we become farther and farther out of balance. Gary, is there anything you wanted to add to these two? Gary was also kind enough to put together instructional assistant pay scale. It's a little bit difficult sometimes to really see because not all school divisions post all of these scales. So Gary pulled what he could with Culpeper, Louisa, Madison and Spotsylvania and get an idea of where we are relative to the average of those school divisions. And in the next slide, again, we removed, in this case, Madison to take a look at the three school divisions that we have been losing the most employees to when they, if they stay in education, they, these are the divisions they go to, and where we stand with respect to the average compensation and Orange County. Anything you want to add there? Okay. As far as positions, things that we are looking to add, you will notice our commitment that these are going to be building-based positions. Last year, it was a high priority to increase our support at the Locust Grove Elementary and Primary Site with an assistant principal. And by my understanding, that was one of the last things to get cut. And that would be something that we would like to really prioritize this year. Moving forward with the.
The thing we know there is we have one, and this allows to have a full-time assistant
We also are seeing with the pending leaving of Mr. Berry and a lot of the tasks that he completes, as well as the rising level of administrative tasks and responsibilities placed on our nurses, we feel it is, it would be a very, very wise investment to hire an RN that would be a nurse and a nurse manager that would be based at the high school. One reason is it is truly not feasible to continue to serve our 1,500 student high school with one nurse. And so that's number one. Number two, the nurse manager can take on some supervisory capacity with the other nurses. And in my opinion, more importantly, if a nurse has to be out at a particular building, this nurse manager can help and go and actually cover. And we have RN coverage at buildings, so we leave ourselves not open to not having a nurse on-site. And so we see great value in a nurse manager, and Ms. Ailer is here, they fall under her domain ultimately, so she's happy to answer any questions you have there. The next positions that you see listed are already in our school division and they are funded with ESER monies. We have student support coaches and a technology support specialist. ESER funding is set to expire at the end of next fiscal year. The, we currently have 41 positions paid for via ESER funding. You have these six positions here. We have nine permanent substitute positions. And we have 26 employees that are paid on the instructional assistant scale. And so one thing that we fear greatly is the ESER cliff and life after ESER and what that might look like. And so in an effort to try to shorten the drop of the cliff and make it less of a chasm and make it maybe more of a valley that we have to cross, we would, we are going to prioritize trying to move the student support coaches and our technology support specialists who are all in buildings, working and based in buildings, to local operating funding so that we are not setting ourselves up for quite as big of a hurdle when we get to next year at this time when we're determining positions. Anything I missed there, Gary? Okay. If you would go next, Laura. Another, another group of folks that we have, but we don't. We, we are committed to improving teaching and learning in this school division because that is what our primary job is. We are here to see to it that our students get an excellent education. And we have decided that it would be a very excellent route to go as opposed to having managerial department chairs to employ true curriculum specialist lead teachers. And so I say that we have these positions, but we don't, we have, we have these number of folks essentially, for all intents and purposes, serving in a department chair managerial administrivia-type capacity. We are committed to increasing and enhancing the roles and responsibilities of these leads. These would be jobs that you would, there would be a formal application process for. There would be a formalized process for setting goals. You would have a mid-year review, you would have an end-of-the-year review. And they would be focused considerably on working as a liaison between the building as well as our curriculum and instruction department to help improve and enhance teaching and learning in our school division. And so some of this would include the reallocation of funds because our current department chairs get paid a stipend. And so that stipend would no longer be paid to department chairs. We would utilize that money plus some additional funding to pay lead teachers an enhanced salary, also coinciding with enhanced levels of expectations, roles and responsibilities. If you go next, Laura.
So that would, department chairman would disappear?
Yes, correct. And now some of the, some of the work that a department chair does as far as ensuring that the department is taken care of, lead teachers will, there's, the work still has to be done. But the primary focus is going to be on curriculum, assessment, PLCs and the actual process of teaching and learning.
Would they remain in the classroom?
Yes, yes. This is a stipend position. So the, these are, these are teachers. They are currently teachers serving in department chair. And so this would be additional responsibilities that they would be willing to take on. And we would make it very clear upfront what our roles, responsibilities and expectations would be. And so we see great value in that and we are willing to attack and approach more compensation because we are going to seek more and better work from these folks. One last thing, just as a reminder for the board, last year, the ask, so to speak, from the county was $881,549. Through a host of factors that Mr. Honniger or Yvonne could talk through, there was increased insurance costs, both in health insurance, correct Yvonne, as well as providing long-term and short-term disability coverage for all VRS.
Oh, for legacy.
For legacy, VRS legacy employees. And so there was an additional infusion of 1.2 million in September that Mr. Honniger came in. There was a supplemental appropriation at the October board meeting that was approved. And so as we move forward, I just, this was more of just a reminder that the initial ask last year of 881,000, there was additional money that was sent and infused to the school budget to cover the insurance costs as well as the cost to provide the short and long-term disability care to our legacy employees with the understanding that that was going to be a recurring cost. That's not a one-time expense. And so as we work through and build the budget this year, we will, we, we will anticipate and include in what would be the additional cost to continue to provide short and long-term disability care to our legacy employees. And going back to the second or third slide, not pass along health insurance increases to our employees. Anything I missed, Gary?
Could you define what, what legacy is?
Ms. Dawson? Yes, we can. It's based on years of service and essentially we have Plan One and Two employees as well as hybrid, correct?
So legacy employees are employees that were enrolled in VRS prior to, I believe, January of 2013. At that point, employees that went into VRS were called hybrid employees. It's a different setup as far as like the contributions go. And for a hybrid, automatically, they were provided short and long-term disability that the school division had to pay for. That's part of the plan. Legacy employees did not have that same benefit, so they had to purchase short and long-term disability. So part of what we've been working on with the county for the past couple of years is to get our benefits aligned so that, you know, if you're a county employee or a school employee, everything was, was matching. They were offering the short and long-term disability for their legacy employees. So when we had this meeting, that was an area that we brought up and they.
And then going back, it, it's also part of the reason, if you remember when we brought forward and we ultimately decided to do away with the sick leave bank, we no longer had to go that route because now we, we, we had a vehicle and a backup for our legacy employees with the short and long-term disability for those, for those folks. So it was something that is part of the package for a hybrid employee that wasn't part of the package for employees that were before January of 13.
And in other words, it impacts people that are 10 years or more in the system. And as we move forward, it'll get less, that problem will get less and less and then finally go away.
Correct. Yes.
Yes.
Do we know, do the other neighboring districts also offer that benefit?
The short and long-term disability, so for hybrid, you have to. That's, that's written in the plan type. For legacy employees, I honestly, I don't remember. The county put together a study of insurance. They kind of, they did it similar to like what our salary scale looks like, and we were well below our neighboring counties. So that's kind of what was driving this conversation to begin with was to get our benefits uplifted and to, to be more competitive in that market as well. But I, I don't have that answer. I can find out for you if you want me to find out about the other, would you like to know about maybe like the Culpeper, Louisa, Spotsy?
Yeah, I was just wondering because a lot of times when you're looking at overall salary, they lump in your benefits package too to see like, you know, if, if you have a county that's offering better benefits, your, your salary might be lower, but you're actually going to be earning more. So that might be something that would be beneficial to be advertising.
Yes, we've actually talked about that, the last conference that Dr. Hornick and Mr. Honniger were at, that was one of the areas that they talked about is, does your division do a good job with selling your package as a whole? And we don't. You know, we go in and we talk about, here's your base salary and here are the benefits that we offer, but we don't talk about what is that actually costing the division that's not costing you as the employee anything? The life insurance, the, the disability plan. So that's one of the areas that we're going to focus on when we're rolling out our offers going forward. We're going to have, we're going to capture what that whole looks like.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Just another question. Say you have a teacher that came from another state that's 15 years of experience, would they be considered a legacy employee or an?
So they have never worked in Virginia? No, they would be a hybrid.
Okay, so I, I'm just theorizing off the top of my head because we don't have a whole lot of teachers coming with a whole bunch of experience. Most of our teachers are either beginners or less than 10 years.
You'd be surprised. Honestly, you would be surprised, Mr. Hopkins. I can't believe the number of teachers that we've hired just this past year that have over 10 years of experience and the ones that have relocated to Virginia from other places.
Right. Well, you're going to have that for people that actually relocate, but.
The legacy employees are, are, they're, they're slimming out and the numbers of the hybrid employees are, are going up.
I mean, I certainly support what we're doing. I just, in my personal opinion, it doesn't have much to do with filling jobs. People, people are always going to be moved. The husband gets a job here and the wife moves. And I mean, that's always going to happen. But I, from my experience, teachers that have more than 10 years in are usually going to stay with the system because if they want to move, they're going to move before that.
I wish that were true these days. There's no rhyme or reason. Yeah, we're, we're just.
Well, I mean, I guess in the market determines that.
So when I first, so I'm in my 20th year here. When I first came here, I thought it was crazy when somebody left after five years. I was like, what are they doing? Now I'm just want them to get through the year. That, that's where, that's where we live. And it is. We, we've lost 15 teachers this school year since, since August 1st. That's a significant number. So we're, we're trying to do everything we can, not just in the salary, but the benefit package and the other things that we're able to do as a division to try to keep the, the employees that we do have.
Yeah, well, we could go back and look at the salary scales, but you saw how, as a father in, how we fell back.
Yes.
When you're falling back $5,000 and $6,000 a year on salary, I don't think the employee's making a choice because of health benefit.
Probably not. That's very true. Very true.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We will move on, and this was our originally scheduled programming from December the 19th. So I would like to invite Judy and Renee to. So I would like to invite Judy and Renee to come forward to provide the board an update and a presentation on our K-12 curriculum for electives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share information on these important courses that play an integral part in our children's experience in school. So on the next slide, these are the types of classes and courses that we're going to talk about tonight. You'll hear these referred to as connect at the elementary level, exploratories at the middle level, and electives at the high school level. So if you hear that terminology from the schools, these are the types of courses that they're talking about. With the exception tonight, Renee is going to give a presentation in February that's specific to CTE courses. But tonight, we're going to share some information on how the curriculum is designed in these other areas.
So if you remember back in December, when we talked about the core instruction, we talked about how we take all of these different components, and they all play a role in how we come up with the curriculum for our classes. That goes for our electives as well. We start at the Virginia Standards of Learning. They either have, these electives either have a standards of learning, or standard progression charts, or both, in some cases. In some of the areas, they do also have the curriculum framework. And if you remember, the curriculum framework goes into more detail for the teachers, gives them, you know, much more detailed view, other than the standards. There are the assessments and the classroom instruction, and all those things play together to make up our curriculum in our electives. Additionally, it's important when we sit down with the teachers to come up with our, our plans for these areas, that they look at not only the curriculum, but how they instruct and how they assess, because all three of those things have to be in alignment.
You've seen this graphic before in our previous presentation related to core content. So all of these areas, we also receive a lot of guidance from our State Department of Education. So we start with those resources that are provided to us, then our teachers work across the division together to share lessons and units. From there, they make a lot of decisions at the school level. For instance, at the elementary level, often the teachers in art, PE, and music will work together and integrate projects for the students, and they'll be working on projects throughout the year. And then again, teachers are able to make adjustments at their classroom level to accommodate the needs of their students, and to differentiate instruction to meet needs of individual students. So we're going to share some of the resources that our teachers use in these areas, and you'll see that a lot of it is very similar to what you've seen before in the core areas. So we're going to start with pre-K, because that's a little bit different from our K-12 resources. So you've seen the, the areas, the three to the left in our previous presentation, but also, our students who are in pre-K are responsible, our teachers in pre-K are responsible for supporting our students there in health and physical development, and in cognitive development. So you'll see the kinds of skills that they work on that would be considered health, under gross motor, fine motor skills, physical health, and how to take care of themselves. And then the fine arts fall under that cognitive development component of their curriculum. So that includes music and fine arts, and also lots of dance and expression movement in the classroom. Not formalized, but informal. Our pre-K curriculum that we've adopted is called Frog Street, and those kinds of activities are embedded in the lessons within that program. So they have art, music, and physical movement as ways of enhancing what they're learning that's academic, and it's integrated throughout their lessons each day. This particular slide shows the kind of progression, and also the kinds of indicators that are used for gross motor skills. This is just one example. There would also be another example provided to teachers that would, that would show that progression for fine motor, for example. So you can see, we start with students as young as birth, all the way up through the time that they enter kindergarten. These are the kinds of skills that our pre-K students engage in in art and music. So you see lots of opportunities for exploration, for sensory types of experiences, and a lot of opportunities within their learning for them to incorporate music and movement, and of course, play, because that is how young children learn.
So beginning in kindergarten and running all the way through 12th grade, we do have health and physical education, and the state does provide us with SOL, Standards of Learning, in those areas. They are broken out into strands, motor skill development, anatomical basis of movement, fitness planning, social and emotional development, and then energy balance. And you'll see some of those as we go through. The first example you see here...
I found this on the web.
Oops, sorry. My watch is telling us what we're finding. Sorry about that. So we have our health and PE standards of learning here. This is an example of a second grade standard of learning, very similar to the ones that you saw for the core areas. And then to the right, that is the curriculum framework. For health and PE, they do provide that curriculum framework, especially in the area of health. They don't, in all of the different elective areas that they do in the health and PE. So that's an example of both the standard and curriculum framework. The next slide shows you an example of a high school. That is a high school, grade 10 is the standard of learning, and then also the curriculum framework that goes with that, just to give the teachers a little bit more detail on how to teach it, and how to unpack that standard.
You'll see the, the same type of setup for fine and visual arts. These areas are organized by strands. They include creative process, critical thinking and communication, history, culture, and citizenship, innovation in the arts, and then of course, technique and application. And then we'll show a few examples from music and for art. So again, you can see that those SOLs are broken down by creative, this is just from the strand of creative process on the left. So this is an example from 7th grade. And then you see another on the right that shows the progression under the strand of technique and application. So that shows the teachers how the student's skills would develop over time. Again, these are very broad pictures of this. And then in music, you can see, this is just another example, this is high school music instrumental, and it shows then that strand of technique and application, how that standard And a similar example for visual arts. So you see, this is a 4th grade standards, and it shows two of the strands there. They're mapped out for each of the strands. And then again, you can see that progression for the high school as well.
To give you more information for this, if you go to the Virginia Department of Ed website, you'll see for all of the different areas, they have, this is an example of visual arts, but they have it for all of them, standards progression chart, so you can kind of look at elementary, middle, and high school, and how the skills progress all the way through. They have instructional plans for art teachers and educators, some professional learning resources, and also just some information on some of the professional organizations that are out there for the teachers. But if you go to the DOE website, you'll see how all these resources are available. So next, we have world languages. We have world language starting in middle school here. World language was recently upgraded. We just, last year was the first year with the new standards. You have the five different world language strands that all of the standards fall under. You can go ahead to the next one. This is an example of the standards of learning on the left, but this is the sample progress indicator and proficiency level. So you, you can see where they have all of the strands and benchmarks on the left, and then students, depending on their skill level, and a lot of it is their oral speaking ability, novice, intermediate, and advanced. So that's how the teachers grade them in the classroom. So that's the end of our presentation. You'll remember that we showed you this, this is our instructional...
Right.
...design in our department. And we start, again, with the visible learning, trying to make sure that all of our learning is visible, that all of our lessons are engaging and relevant, and have the appropriate level of rigor for students.
And of course, we also want our, our teachers in these areas that are not core areas also focusing on the five Cs that have been set forth by the VDOE. So we want them to be involved in, and I hope I don't forget any, critical thinking, citizenship, collaboration, communication, and of course, creativity, which these areas lend themselves very readily to. We have very talented teachers in these areas. They do work together. For example, in our last professional development day, they came together and they share units and collaborate across the division. And our students are, are very fortunate to have a lot of these opportunities that really do inspire them to come to school because they love those classes. So we're, we're very happy to provide any other additional information.
And the link here is to the DOE website, if you'd like to look at some of these resources more closely.
Renee, could you just talk briefly about CTE competencies?
In February, I plan to do an entire presentation on the CTE.
Beautiful.
They are a little bit different, and February is CTE month, so I thought it would be a good time to not only present to you the CTE competencies and curriculum, but also to celebrate some of the programs that we have in our teachers and community partners.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson and Dr....
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our last report and slash recommendation this evening is some information about our, our work with the Arts Center in Orange. I just wanted to take a few moments to talk about some of the things that we have coordinated in the past with this group.
Oh, excuse me, Dr. Honnicker.
Yes, sir.
As the board knows, I have a couple motions that go along after this presentation. I, I'm going to prefer to whatever you want, I'm going to ask that we do the motions when we have more board members here, so that would probably be the next meeting. Would you like to wait for this for the next week, or would you like to proceed now? It's fine with me, either way.
It's, it's the will of you guys. We can wait if you want to.
Well, I...
I think it'd be beneficial to allow Mr. Jones and Ms. Anderson to be involved.
Just, just a reminder, everybody here, we have a majority of the board, but two people can't pass anything. This board requires three votes to pass anything, so I don't want to really get into it tonight.
Yeah.
Fine with me, sir.
All right, so...
Deferred until next time.
All right.
And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and that's all for reports and recommendations.
Thank you. So at this time, Ms. Byron, can we review our calendars, please?
Sure. Okay. For February, we have the Governor's School meeting on the 1st, and the District Spelling Bee at 6:00 PM at Prospect. And then, we have a board meeting every Monday in February, because it's budget time. So if these are, if we find some of them aren't needed, we could possibly cancel the budget work sessions, but right now, they're all on the books and scheduled. We have tentatively the Strategic Planning Steering Committee on the 15th, 16th, and 17th. We also have our Academic Scholars Institute Community Partnership Dinner at 5:30 on the 16th at Prospect, and there is a prep board meeting on the 17th.
Okay.
And then, going, moving forward to March, we have the VSBA Central Region Forum. I'm not sure, have they chosen where that will take place yet?
Yeah. I don't know that they've announced it yet. I think it's still to be determined.
Okay. And as you will recall, this is the one where they have the VSBA art contests. We submit our artwork for that. We have our regular meetings on the 6th, and a work session on the 27th, and an Ed Foundation Board meeting on the 23rd, and a prep meeting on the 24th.
Yep. All righty.
Hi, Madam Chair. I expect to not be in attendance at the March 28th board meeting, or 27th board meeting.
When is your due date?
13th.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like me to move on to the agenda for February 6th?
Yeah. I'm sorry, we were just chatting.
Okay. So February 6th, we will have recognitions. We will have our regular general public comment. I will remove the surplus property items, and so we will have the calendar item and the discussion of the local organizations.
All right.
And do I have that correct, Chelsea? Well, you'll have Head Start report that evening, or do you think no?
Um, not February 6th. I think our next meeting's the 20th.
Okay. So I'll remove that. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Byron. So with that, can, do we have closed session tonight? No closed session?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not put that on the agenda, but yes, we do. I can't believe that that was left off the agenda.
I thought I was going to get to go home.
That's, that's weird. I, I'm sorry. I use a template, and it, I don't understand how it's not there, but we do.
It's quite all right.
Let me, the motion will be the same, it's just personnel, so let me go back. I can pull up the January 2nd for you to read.
All right. That'll work. Maybe the other time, I would probably have it.
Do you want my computer, Chelsea?
I got it. Thank you. So pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We're in closed session. We're in closed session. Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the recommended approval of the personnel agenda and addendum to include resignation, salary adjustment, employment, termination, transfer, and retirement of staff, and extracurricular and coaching appointments.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And at this time, is there any other business?
Aye.
Then I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.